Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen to Order, March 24, 2016. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the Selectmen's Meeting of February 10, 2016.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen Minutes for the meeting of February 11, 2016.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Hearing, none? We'll get right to it. Good evening, everyone. We are, I feel like this is Groundhog Day for 40B projects. We had a conversation last week concerning the project over at Avalon in the shipyard. Tonight, we're going to have another discussion of another 40B project. And this is informational only, there's no votes being taken tonight. We're hearing what you're hearing for the first time. We're familiar with certain basic aspects of it, where it's located, potential number of units. But the plan is that the applicant will be invited to present a rollout, if you will, of its project. At which time, we'll conclude and then we'll give everybody in the audience who wants to speak an opportunity to talk. The procedure being, go to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. I really strongly urge you to remember, though, that it's the Zoning Board of Appeals that is going to hear this application. It's the Zoning Board of Appeals that's going to make this decision on this submittal. The Selectmen have a very limited role in what happens here. So if you didn't watch last week's meeting, I commend you to do so because there was a lot of good information about the 40B process generally, which can apply not only to the Avalon project but also to this particular project or any other 40B project that we may come across as a community going forward. All right? So at this point in time, I would invite the applicant to join us at the table. Please identify yourself by name and address. Can you hear me back there?
Those two mics down, keep them about 12.
Semi? Can you hear me? I'm sorry about that. I just assumed you could hear me. Okay.
Thank you.
Better. Do you want me to repeat what I said?
No.
Okay. Let's go. Counsel.
I thank you, Mr. Hilli. My name is Jeff Toccio and I represent Alliance Residential. Mike Bajulian is with me here. He's the Managing Director. And I'm going to turn it over to him just right away and let him go with it. With us is Brian O'Connor and then he'll do some of the presentation with the boards. And then we also have a handout a little later on, so if you don't have it already.
Thanks, Jeff. So can you guys let me know if you can hear me okay? Is that all right? So thanks, Jeff. My name's Mike Bajulian. As you mentioned, I'm the Managing Director for Alliance Residential. I run the New England region from Maine to Connecticut, however, we spend most of our time in Greater Boston. I've been working in Greater Boston housing for about 15 years, multifamily housing for a number of different groups. I was raised in Arlington in Humorock, so this is sort of local stomping grounds for me. My father still uses the commuter boat in Hingham every day to go to work. So the point of that is just simply that I take great care of my own reputation and Alliance does as well. These are projects that I drive by and will drive by with my friends and family for the rest of my life, so I take this very seriously. So tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about Alliance, a little bit about the process that we'd like to begin today, really, is the first step. How it's different than some of the other 40B materials you guys have seen in the processes. And then I'd hand it over to Brian O'Connor of Cube 3 to talk about some of the site fundamentals and metrics. So if you haven't looked at Alliance online, I'd encourage you to. Alliance is a national leader in multifamily building, but in a bit of a different way, not using the typical metrics of just size or how many units we put out every year. Alliance expanded to Boston in November of 2014. And nationally, we've been known as a top-of-market developer. We've been ranked number one by the number of groups, but not just for how many units we produce, but also for sustainability, best places to work, highest-quality assets, various other accolades. It's a group that cares very much about its reputation. We're privately held, we are not a major institutional group, privately held and really well-managed and carefully managed. So the other thing that sets us apart from some of our competitors is that we don't have programmatic designs that we roll out in every market. So some of my competition might, you might see the same building built in Needham as you would in Boulder, as you would in Austin, Texas. That's not how Alliance is built. We staff every one of our regional offices with local talent. In fact, our office is 100% local talent. Our teams are all from Boston or Greater Boston, all of my consultants, including Jeff. And there's a reason for that, because these projects are a part of the community. These become our neighbors. And so that takes a special touch. It takes a careful hand. So if you haven't, check out allresco.com, A-L-L-R-E-S-C-O dot com. Whether it's our Met Lofts in LA, which are super chic and cool, or the Little Italy Project in San Diego, you'll get an idea of how careful and specific and customized we are with how we approach these. I promise that Hingham will be no different for us. So we take pride in doing the right thing. That's the message. We want to become a part of this community. Hingham is a really strong town for a number of reasons: transit, coastal, history. It's just really a special place. So we're not looking to just sort of hitch onto that and benefit from it. We want to become a part of it. And we think you have a really special zone in the area we're talking about here, so we hope we can start this process in a collaborative way and work with everybody to make sure that it does that, that it becomes a part of an already great town. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the LIP process, which is, I think you guys talked a little bit about last week. There are a couple of different ways to do a LIP, but our intent is to propose this project as a LIP, which is an acronym for Local Initiative Program. As Mr. Chairman said, the Zoning Board of Appeals is still the authoritative entity in all this. However, the LIP has a bit of a softer approach. We're not here asking for an approval tonight, and we won't, certainly not with this board. The reason is simply because of where that authority relies, but also because we haven't started yet. We're really at the very beginning of this process. We haven't started our traffic studies. We have not started most of our major studies that'll be a part of this development. We have project concepts, we have ideas. We've tried to be really thoughtful in how we put those together, and we're going to show you those tonight. But this isn't, you know, some of our competition, for example, was quite a bit further along before that dialogue started, and that's not really how I or Alliance does business. So this process is different. It starts here. And our intent is to ask, at this early stage, for buy-in on a concept. This isn't a place where we can really vet traffic and all those important details which we're going to get into with you. So this first stage is, here's our idea. So this soft start's important, and I've done a LIP before. In fact, it was in a very similar situation in a different town, of course, but the soft start allows us to really have that discussion first and to open the dialogue with key department heads in key departments, the police, fire, engineering, neighbors, of course, and everybody else that's in the political side here. That's important for this. I believe that. It's not eye-wash. So the end result is really great because it doesn't really change the functional part of this process. It still has to go through the ZBA, and we'll still vet impacts and all, you know, what it takes for us to become a neighbor here and carry our load and contribute, rather than just coming in and building an apartment community and then saying, "See you later." But it also means that by the time you're having that ZBA process, you've already put all of the issues on the table. And that's important. That process shouldn't be stressful. It shouldn't be, you know, you hear words like ramming down throats, and that's not what this should be. It doesn't have to be. So hopefully that this process can be a part of that. So in the end, you end up with a better project, is the bottom line. It's something that belongs, it's something that everybody here, I would hope, would want to live in. I'll want to live in it, hopefully, if we do it right. So as you've probably surmised, the biggest piece here is that, along with other projects and applications the town is vetting, this project would be sufficient for Hingham to obtain the 10% goal. And I know that that's not as absolute as it sounds, but at least in the eyes of the state, this process, project, has the opportunity for Hingham to put 40B behind it forever. And so that's something I hope everybody would take seriously and put in this context as we discuss the important pieces in the coming months, certainly not tonight, that we keep that in mind. So I will say that even if the Board of Selectmen eventually do not decide to support the LIP, Hingham can expect the same Mike Bajulian and process from Alliance. I'm still going to be collaborative. I'm still going to figure out how to be a good contributor and a good neighbor. I'm still going to figure out how to adapt this project to make sure that it fits. And that's why, in the coming weeks, when we start talking to town officials in major departments and neighbors, you know, that process can start. So whatever happens here, you're going to get the same collaborative process from Alliance and from me and my team. So with that, I'll introduce you to the team. I think a lot of you do know Jeff. I'm lucky to have Jeff. Jeff was an important part of this team because Jeff's a local. Jeff looks at everything I show him through a lens that I can't look through. So it may not be exhaustive, and there's certainly a lot of other people that we need to talk to, but that's a huge and important part of this, I'm lucky to have him. The second is Cube 3 Studio. I've been working with Cube 3 for 10 years. I'm sure to you it feels like longer. Tonight, I have with me Brian O'Connor. Brian's a founder and a principal and a partner. Brian brings tens of thousands of developments, not with me, but total, of experience to this project. He's the most thoughtful designer I've ever met, and a lot of what you're going to see tonight is collaboration with he and I, but him telling me that that's a bad mic, don't do that. So I'm excited to have him show you what we're conceiving, or at least the concepts, and how we've strategized about how to use the site. The site has tremendous natural resources and benefits. So we've really shaped, and will continue to shape, this project around those. They're not just a benefit for the site, they're something that exists in Hingham already. I was there at the site today, taking some photos, and I must have seen 30 people walking Bear Cove Park. It was 30 degrees. So we intend not to impose on that. Our goal is to relate to it. So Brian's going to help explain how those strategies integrate. So briefly, I'm going to talk about the proposed project, and then we'll let Brian have at it with you guys and show you some of the graphics we've brought. We have some handouts, whatever's left over, I'm happy to share. So as I mentioned again, we haven't really started the major parts of this process. Today is kickoff. So I'll tell you some of the things we like about the site. You probably all know it, but I have to say it. This is a really strong location, not just because it's attractive from a market and business standpoint for what I do, but because the site brings with it benefits that bring down the impacts on a community. Most sites aren't this walkable. Most sites don't have places where you don't need to drive to to go to three different grocers, or four different banks, or within 1 and 1/4 miles, two different transit options, both extremely viable. These things bring cars off the roads, they attract a type of customer and a type of resident that tends to be non-family. I don't have any problem with families, but particularly in higher-density housing projects like this one, it's not an attractive place to raise a kid for most people. It does happen. There will be school-aged children here. It'll be relatively very low, but, and that's something we're going to study and vet. But those are really important things, restaurants, shopping. When the train station or the boat, the commuter ferry, is only 1,200 or 1,800 feet away, depending on how you measure it, people don't get in their car to go to work. So these are things that are attractive to me from a business standpoint, because that's what residents want. But they're also important because it means that this is a unique site and that it can provide fewer impacts than typical on a project like this. So it also allows us, because it's a large site at 12 acres, that we can have a pretty reasonable density per acre. Obviously, that's very subjective. I'm sure I'll hear more about that. But at 25 units an acre, we're less than half of some of our nearby competition. And what also that has allowed us to do, and with some other programming things that Brian will discuss, including a very expensive structured garage that we will completely hide from view, it allows us to keep a lot of open space. We've already tree-surveyed the site. There are some remarkable 60-foot oak trees, a red oak that is beautiful, belongs in a front yard, I wish I could move it. So these are the types of thoughtful things that we're going to bring to this project and bring to this discussion with you. So I talked about who was going to live here. It's non-families. This site is a unique barbell demographic site, which is a technical term for basically meaning there's people on the early age and the late age. So we'll have a pretty good base of 25- to 34-year-olds, probably one, at least one couple, if they are a couple, working in Boston and utilizing the ferry. Most of the people, the majority of people living in this project will probably be Hingham residents, one way or another, whether they finally can have an option to live in the town they grew up in. Police and firefighters are huge parts of our rental demographic, we cater to them. And then on the other side of the barbell demographic, we have middle-aged divorcees, empty nesters, retirees, pied-à-terre, people that sold their home but want to stay in Hingham and close to their family and will buy a house in, you know, Florida. So that's who's here. As I mentioned, there will be children, but really, we position this project and market these communities at those people because they're what we call renters by choice. These aren't people that otherwise would have bought a home. In fact, many of them are going to be paying more than a mortgage to live here because it's the lifestyle that they want, not just the type of ownership. So the last piece I want to talk about is the, and this is informing on the type of people that will live here, is the affordability piece. 25% of the product will be affordable by state standards, and they'll meet what's called 80% of the area's median income, the AMI. The area median income for Greater Boston right now is $98,000. So this is, that's a household income. So if there were two young couples making $60,000 out of college or something like that, they would be just past this. But the point is, is that the program is really targeted at the young professionals we're having trouble keeping in Massachusetts. It's very expensive to live here, and if you are not, if you do not have a girlfriend at 26-years-old, even with a great college degree, it's really hard to afford a one-bed. So that's really who this moderate-income program is targeting. It also has a huge absorption rate, as I mentioned, police, fire, teachers, local municipal employees. So this is the population that lives here. And the good thing I can tell you is I have great experience that these are people that want to be here and probably already live here. So anyway, with that, I'll introduce Brian O'Connor. As I mentioned, Brian's with Cube 3 Studio. He's going to show you what the site's like now, what we're proposing, with some early concepts of what we think this thing might look like, and then open it up.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Selectmen, members of the public. What I'd like to do is just quickly walk you through the site, a few of the building plans, and take a look at a couple of quick images. This is the site itself outlined in red here. Beale Street is along the top, the Hingham Shipyard Plaza.
Is it okay if we tilt it with the cameras in it? Is that all right?
Just as long as we can see it.
We have handouts for you.
I have about a dozen here.
Why don't you give them four?
One, two, three. Sorry, Brian, bear with us for a sec. Four. So we have four. I got it. Next one? I'll get an extra one.
Let me have one more before you hear.
You get some seats up front here, too, guys, if you want to come up closer.
Four seats right up front here for anybody. Front row.
Why don't we save a couple of those for the trustees of the Back River?
I gave one to Lisa. And I can search it with these electronic devices as well.
Okay, well, we have Academy Chair over there for Back River, you should see one. And if you can give one to our council, that's a great. She has one, okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, I'll leave a stack up here for the rest of you guys.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move on, I'm sorry about that. So the site itself is outlined in red, and again, we're up against Beale Street. The site address is 230 Beale Street. It's approximately 12 acres with fairly limited frontage along Beale Street, fantastic edge to the property on the east side against Bear Cove Park. We're wrapping around the ballfields here and against the housing over on the west side. We think it's important, and we've walked the site a significant number of times, spent some time out there. I think there are some amazing attributes to the site, as Mike mentioned, which we're going to work hard to preserve, not the least of which is the tree-lined edge here. And we're going to work very hard, and the plans that we have tonight show no further intrusion towards the Back River or Bear Cove Park than the existing development on the site as it sits right now. We also think that there are some really core design strategies and site-planning strategies, which I'll outline for you in a minute, but at the root of all of them, it's the idea of maintaining a setback from Beale Street that's meaningful, so we're not crowding the edge of the road, maintaining, you know, as generous a buffer and appropriate landscape buffer as we can up against the neighborhood, respecting the back edge of the site that's already currently developed, thinking about the screening and the plantings along the edge of the ballfield, and recognizing that the massing and scale of this project needs to work both within the community and from longer views from Beale Street. Because it is quite clear to us that we have an opportunity at the front door here to be very respectful to the edge of the street, but we also recognize that as you drive down Beale Street, potentially in both locations, there will be some longer views from a distance of the project in the back. So, you know, from a site-planning strategy, thinking about how the buildings sit on the site is quite critical to the project. Before we get into the plan itself, and these numbers are small, so I'll read them for you all. We just wanted to hit on a few key metrics here to make sure everyone understood what we were proposing. Currently on the site, there's an existing two-story, 50,000-square-foot office building and 120 surface parking spaces, which are going to be removed. And that's on the 12-acre site. Yep.
Better, yeah. I just want to be able to follow you when you point into stuff.
Sorry.
Okay.
The project itself, as proposed, is a total of 300 units that are organized in two buildings, and there are a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. We have, the one-bedroom units are a little over 800 square feet, the two-bedroom units are almost 1,200 square feet, and the 300-bedroom units are close to 1,500 square feet. There are 118 one-bed units, 137 two-bed units, and 45 three-bed units, for a total of 300. One of the site-design strategies, which you'll see in a minute, that we spent a lot of time thinking about is how to mask and hide and manage any surface parking. So we are proposing a total of 450 parking spaces on the site for a parking ratio of approximately 1.5 spaces per unit, but we have paid significant and particular attention to how those spaces are organized and where they're visible on the site. So I'm going to walk you through the proposed site plan. Again, this is oriented in the same manner as the original plan, the property line around the edges here, Bear Cove Park down in this direction, and Beale Street across the top. As I mentioned earlier, maintaining a buffer up in this area against the edge of Beale Street is really important. So we're about 120 feet from the leading edge of the building to the edge of Beale, and that's in this zone right here. The project itself is organized around basically two buildings, a smaller building up towards the front edge of the site, and then a larger building towards the back. The larger building is organized around what appear in this image to be two courtyards. In fact, the courtyard on the left-hand side is a structured parking garage, and what we're proposing is to take all of the structured spaces that I mentioned earlier and build a four-story structured parking garage in this area that's wrapped almost completely, it's fully wrapped on three sides, exposed on the back, to completely hide any and all of that parking from any of the view corridors from Beale Street or from any of the open ballfields or the neighbors. Now, a really key piece to this parking garage is, instead of allowing the top deck to just be open, concrete parking deck with light poles, we're actually proposing to build a large elevated outdoor patio area up there with views out towards the Back River and Bear Cove Park. So we're taking the parking for the project, really concentrating it in a single area and wrapping it in almost in its entirety to prevent any views or headlights shining out of the parking garage into the neighborhood of the surroundings. So the other courtyard is actually at-grade, down on the ground, and kind of fronts and connects out to Bear Cove Park on the backside. Just to walk you through the site and how it actually works, as you enter the site from Beale Street, you'd come past this first building, and you'd arrive at a space in-between these two buildings. This space here is really where we'd have our primary leasing function and main arrival to the project. So the leasing amenities and main functionality for new residents and for people that live here is really buried fairly deeply into the site, kind of minimizing that sort of exposure to that activity level from the neighborhood. There is a small surface parking lot here with a drop-off and arrival point for Building One, and then you could circulate along the edge here and then tuck down into an access point for the garage over here serving the back. The buildings are fairly straightforward, and they're really organized and designed around some of the sort of key site-planning strategies I mentioned earlier. In addition to the buffer at the edge, we've pulled Building One back fairly significantly from the edge of the ballfields, allowing us to really maintain the tree line and the buffer that exists there. Our anticipation would be that, in addition to what lives there right now, as the project is developed, we'll develop a very healthy landscape plan to come in and continue to sort of accentuate the buffer in this area and along the backside here. The building on the back is actually really pulled back as far as we could from the edge of the ballfield, and the idea was really to create a datum at the back edge of the site that aligned with the existing development area, both to prevent us from going any further into Bear Cove Park and allow us to create a fairly significant green space in front of the project, which would also create almost a front yard and an additional buffer zone back to the ballfields. The road actually then circulates around the edge here, and then you turn around and come back. So we're really not, we're trying to minimize the amount of surface road and the amount of surface parking that we have and really try to concentrate all of that into the deck structure itself. Even within the parking areas that are shown on here, our anticipation is to kind of break these up as much as we can and bring the landscaping and the buffer into those parking areas. We have, over on this edge on the right-hand side, the west side of the project, we have over, I think it's about 100 feet from the property line to the edge of the building, and within that 100 feet, there's actually a fairly significant buffered edge that we're going to be maintaining. From a design standpoint, from an image standpoint, this is really not the design that we're proposing for the project yet. This is really just a very early conceptual image. And the idea here is to really think about Hingham, think about taking some very traditional Hingham cues and Hingham materials and find a way to integrate those with a little bit more of a contemporary edge, to find a blend of a building type that, you know, will really feel like it's of this place. So this view that you're looking at is sort of from that entry drive from Beale Street as you come onto the site. And you can see here, what we're really starting to do is, instead of the blocks that you see in the site plan, really starting to break the building mass and the scale down. So we're proposing, at this leading edge, to really have three-story structure and then stepping up to a four-story volume and then up to five along the back. And some of the design strategies here really involve not only varying and playing with the heights of the buildings themselves, but looking at how to break them down in and out and create some articulation in the facades, break the roof lines, and really focus on detailing these buildings with materials that are consistent with the language of Hingham and finding a way to really create something exciting. I think the goal here, and again, don't get too attached- I think the goal here, and, and again, don't get too attached to the image, whether you, you love it or you hate it, the idea is, you know, we're really just starting the discussion and sort of reinforcing what Mike said. This is, this is the beginning of the process, not the end, so. You have anything else?
That's it?
Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you, appreciate your attention.
Well, thank you. All right. So, I know that people perhaps wanna say something, express their opinions. I'd like to thank the audience for the courtesy they extended to the applicant making its presentation. Whether you agree with it or not, I think it's a good demonstration of the dignity and respect that the town displays, no matter what the message is that's being received. At this time, I'd invite anyone who would like to comment, and to raise their hand. I'll call on anybody who wants to speak. I will not call on the same person twice before everybody's had a chance to cycle through. And if you're making points that have already been raised, I'd just ask you to reflect on that before you talk. So, to the podium, by name and address, Melissa Tully. Okay.
Melissa Tully, 29 Back River, and a trustee of the Back River Condominium Association. I have a copy of a letter here that we have written to the Board of Selectmen that, I don't know if you have copies, but I thought I'd present you with. I'm actually gonna keep one just as a note. Appreciate the applicant coming tonight and to give us an opportunity to see what you're thinking, and appreciate the efforts of the Board of Selectmen to listen to our comments tonight. We heard the 300, we heard the four-story, and so we reacted to what we saw and what we thought was appropriate. We have strong objections to the size, the density, the traffic issues, and we wanted to make sure, and environmental issues, and we wanted to make sure that you are aware of them. Not everybody, if you don't live in this neighborhood, you may not be aware that this is really a dead-end street right here. This is the location of the property you're looking at. This is Stop &amp; Shop, private property. You can get off of 3A here onto Beale Street. You can take a right onto 3A, but no one's ever done it, as far as I know, because you might get killed doing it. The cars come down so fast this way, and there are other legal options of taking Sergeant Terry Drive and Fattler Drive, so there'd be no reason to come down and take a right at the end of Beale Street. So, essentially, you are at a dead-end street. Right here is the Stop &amp; Shop. I have a blow-up of that. Here is the roadway, your roadway coming out. I can't quite see it here.
Right there.
Okay, there. And here is Stop &amp; Shop. Right now, this is already being used as an illegal access to Route 3A frequently. You'll see there's a sign that says, "Private property, do not use this to go through as a cut-through." People do not want to come down here, stop at this stoplight, go up to this stoplight, go through this stoplight to get there. So, they go down through here, and they cut through here and the Stop &amp; Shop parking way, private property, to get there. You'll see, this just happens to be Google Maps, but when Google Map took this, there are 12 cars lined up for this light. They didn't just come from Stop &amp; Shop. With the number increased to 450 cars, they're coming out here, they're not gonna take a right, go down to this light, go up to this light, and take a left to get there. So, and it's, as private property, I don't know how you mitigate that, and you can't put another light here. My, using prior traffic studies, I kinda extrapolated what 400, 150, 450 cars means, about 1,700 trips per day with a vehicle. And as much as you might think this is a walkable area, it isn't. I live right over here. I used to live downtown. I'd walk to restaurants, I'd walk to the Fruit Center, I'd walk everywhere. Occasionally, I walk to Stop &amp; Shop. I never walk over to the shipyard. It just isn't walkable-friendly. No one is gonna walk from here, go over, try to figure out how to navigate 3A to get over to the shipyard. They might ride a bike, but they're not walking over, so it is not walkable as far as getting to restaurants and shopping. Okay. I think that covers, let me just check my notes to make sure. The other thing that we have right here are the Lynch Fields. And this is very active during, there's someone here from the sports partnership that can speak to the number of kids playing there. But this, along here, when there are games going on in the evening during the day, double-side parking going all along here, kids running across the street to get there. Occasionally, the sports partnership will have hired police details out there to make sure everybody is safe. The most recent traffic study showed that there's 85% speeding on Beale Street. So, I just don't see how that is gonna be safe for all of these kids going back and forth and the participants for the fields. And I think that's for traffic. Density, I think that you have 12 acres. I know you've been out there doing borings, I don't know any of the engineering about this, but it would seem to me that you have issues about being able to use all 12 acres. Maybe you've got more information than we do. I don't know, it is, it's, for a dense up, building, most of the ones that are this density have easy access to public, to a major roadway. This does not have easy access to a major roadway, and it's near recreational fields, which we bring back to your attention. The Mass Historical Commission and the Final Environmental Impact Report done for Greenbush lists this as a Native American site, a prehistoric settlement of sizable population, historical period site, and we know there are grave, grave sites there of Native Americans and the work farm people that were there. So, that would need to be flushed out beforehand and find out where those grave sites are so that you're not building on top or disrupting grave sites. Bear Cove Light, Park is a wildlife sanctuary, and they're here tonight to speak to the issues that would, the development would have on the effect of Bear Cove Park. And there is a, an outstanding regulation of sufficient stormwater storage that would need to be addressed and reevaluated, what is the 100-year threshold that would need to be. So, the letter I have here tonight is signed by, I think, all but three people at Back River Condominium, because they were out of town or something, or weren't opening their emails. We understand that you're the property owners, that you have rights and interest in developing your property, but we'd like to make the case to you and the selectmen, if they are looking at a lip or if there's an eligibility that, request that comes in from the town, it's a bad location for this type of density. There are too many problems with both traffic and, and density and utilities, too. The sewer is at capacity. And I'm not sure how you would address that or what disruptive, whether you'd be going through Bear Cove Park to expand the sewer. So, we respectfully request that you listen to these concerns and recognize that this is not an appropriate place for this size of a development. Thank you.
Mr. Barclay.
Hey, one more thing?
Yes.
I did watch last week's selectman meeting, and Susan Murphy did an outstanding job explaining all of the details of 40B. Thank you.
I concur. Mr. Barclay.
Thank you, good evening. Mike Barclay, 11 Cottage Street. Something I'd just like to point out, during your presentation, you indicated that you did not think there would be a lot of children in this development. I'd point out that when the Avalon at the shipyard was first proposed, people didn't think there were gonna be a lot of children there either. And 100 over, I think it's 182 of your units are two-bedrooms or more, 1,200 square feet or more. And I think there, there are a lot of children living in the shipyard in units that size. So, I, I wouldn't underestimate the fact that people wanna move here with children, great school system, 180 units. I don't know how you wanna handicap that, but I really wouldn't underestimate the impact that a development like this is gonna have on the, the schools in this town, number one. Number two, I noticed in the drawing that there only seems to be one entrance and exit. I think most of the time, you know, especially with something this size, from an emergency perspective, having only one entrance and exit probably is, is a little problematic. And then just to address a point that Lisa made about the youth sports, I can speak from the baseball perspective that, starting in April through the first or second week of August, there are baseball games going on at Lynch Field pretty much every day of the week. And there's over 700 kids playing Little League Baseball this year, ages five through 12. So, that's just something that, every single year, and to Lisa's point, I mean, people do park on the streets, it gets very congested, and, you know, I won't reiterate what Lisa said, but just, in particular, the impact, you know, of children in the schools, I, I really wouldn't underestimate that because Avalon made the same claim when they were proposing the shipyard, and you can see school buses of kids coming out of there right now. So, let's be intellectually honest about what the impact of the surfaces in this town will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Barbara Long. I live in Beale's Cove Road. This is my first time here, so I'm pretty emotional about it because I moved to Hingham because I like it as a small town. I'm originally from Dorchester, and this is what is happening in Boston, South Boston, Charlestown, Chelsea, and I don't wanna live in a town like that. I live in Beale's Cove condo, and yesterday, we got 48 signatures opposed to this, and that was just in one day. And I'm sure if we had more time, we'd get a lot more. So, the other thing, the other thing, I understand that Hingham is running out of water, and they have to borrow water from other towns, and, you know, and, I don't know, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll incorporate that into the record. Give that to the town administrator, please. We'll incorporate those signatures into the record. Is there anyone else that would like to, Mr. Granahan? Welcome.
I won't sugarcoat things like other than the residents. I'll tell it like it is. First of all, I was a little insulted.
Identify yourself if you would.
Terry Granahan, 7 Cottage Street.
Thank you.
I'm insulted when the developer says, "We'll solve your 40B problem." That's insulting. We don't have a problem with 40B. The state made this mistake not allowing Linden Ponds to be, solve our 40B. And just because you, they use a local lawyer doesn't mean anything. That's, I won't say anything more there.
Yeah, thanks.
No, I mean, tell it like it is. And the, the other thing is that, I agree with the woman just spoke here, this, this is just too big of a project. It shouldn't belong in Hingham. I have a condo in Charlestown, and it's, the 40Bs have ruined the Charlestown. So, I don't wanna see that happen to, I'm a lifelong Hingham resident, as many of you are here, and this project just shouldn't even get off the ground. It really shouldn't, so, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Mr. Tully.
Neil Tully, 29 Back River Road. And I had more of a question than a comment. I mean, there has been, well, there was about a year ago, some publicity about additional retail development in the shipyard. More recently, on the MBTA's site, there are indications that some portion of the parking lot will be declared surplus, making it available for sale or development. And I just really have a question, is, does the town, or the selectman, or the administrator know anything more about what the plans may be for additional development in the shipyard, particularly residential, where that would impact the overall development in the neighborhood, where we already had the Avalon proposal and now this proposal?
I, I can speak to that in that, the shipyard is always a product of discussions with the potential for real estate development. The T has a rather large parking space. It's not subject to any kind of restriction that the town would like to impose on it. You know, there may be periodic solicitations, there's nothing definitive being proposed, discussed, or contemplated at this time. Do you wanna talk, Mr. Matthews? Would you step up to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address, please? Thank you.
My name is Ted Matthews. I live at 102 Hershey Street, and I'm the current chairman of the Bear Cove Park Committee, which I believe is the soul of butter at this point, other than mass fish and game, which we hope to appropriate that part, those parcels as well. I've come here to speak tonight. I'd like to thank the chairman for recognizing me, and Ted, for all your hard work on time and effort related to vetting this project. Now, I'm here to speak on behalf of myself, the committee, and many, many more of the environmentally conscious people who reside here in Hingham, and Waymouth, who are here tonight, or wanted to be here. And I'd like to speak tonight from an environmental, historic, archaeological point of view in order to persuade you that this development of Hingham Mutual's parcel, B1, which is this highlighted parcel, any further development of this parcel should not happen. The Hingham Mutual property should, should not, should not be touched any further. This is a nice piece of property, but it has a lot of limitations. The office park has always been a, a good neighbor because Hingham Mutual was a low-key company who paid taxes and didn't require much of the town's services. They had a really hard time getting their office building approved. They almost left. The fact that they were the oldest business in town and the founder's name was Lincoln didn't make it any easier. This piece of property, zoned office, is an island surrounded by an area of critical environmental concern, a wildlife management area. It's surrounded on all sides by open space. The Waymouth Back River out in front is an estuary and a, and a nursery for many types of fish and shellfish. Over 500,000 herring went up, went up to Whitman Pond last year, and the run should start within the next few weeks. There are wetlands in front of the existing building on the lot that I know you have recognized. And now, with the new 100-year floodplain, it, it comes up even further past those wetlands. So, I would call that entire acre unbuildable. There's also an Indian grave burial site out there. It contained, there's a woman buried there with her children that were discovered when Hingham Mutual was doing some initial work out there. I've got the documentation from the state related to that site, and they keep that very low-key because they do not want grave robbers moving around in there. Title flats are out in front, state and federal wetlands and coastal regs apply. It appears that the ACEC crosses over a small corner of the front of the property, and maybe I'll just spend a minute about the ACEC. The area of critical environmental concern, which I did not understand when I first got onto this committee, it's a designation that is applied for through the state. The DCR currently controls the ACEC. It was something that, it, it's a conservation ecology program en masse managed by the DCR. The program was conceived in the 1976 Federal Lands Policy and Management Act. It established the first conservation ecology mandate. It's meant to protect important land, water, riparian corridors, threatened and endangered species. species, habitats, cultural and architectural resources, archaeological resources, and unique scenic landscapes that the agency assesses that are in need of special management attention. Hingham and Weymouth joined together and were successful in protecting the Weymouth Back River, including the Moore Brewer property in 1982. This designation does not go away. This map in the back of the, in the front of the room, rather, shows the ACEC. There is a yellow line that borders the entire river, all the way back into Jackson Square. So it's important to recognize, again, that any type of development that occurs within the ACEC needs to be run through the Mass EPA. Not necessarily for approval, but they need to know what's going on. Now, this parcel, B1, like I said, should not be touched. Indian burial site, possible almshouse burial site, floodplain, 200-foot riverfront. The new FEMA regulations have placed more of the wetlands into the picture on many lots surrounding this one, so I believe it becomes a coastal issue. Again, the lower portion of B1 is in the 200-foot riverfront area under Concom jurisdiction, which means the first 50 feet of the river is in a no-touch zone, and the first 100 feet must be undisturbed vegetation. And then I realize that between 100 and 200 feet are a judgment call. So James Sala, who once owned this property, may have signed a copy of a conservation easement on 8.32 acres with the Hingham Concom in 1979. I have a copy of that agreement, but we're still looking for the signed original. We'll strongly oppose any large residential development on this property. I've been in touch with the Department of the Interior, the Mass Fish and Game, and the DCR ACEC managers. We're working on a response. The outcome of those discussions are a work in progress, but I'd ask for any of the private land conservation trusts who wish to get involved in preserving this piece of property to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Yes, ma'am. Lady with the scarf down back. Come on up. Come on up. Come on down. If you'd be so kind to identify yourself by name and address.
Although it's small, I hope this is.
Just tilt it down. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me.
You're welcome.
My name is Linda DiAngelo. I'm a resident in North Weymouth. My address is 40 Next Street. I am the current president of the Back River Watershed Association. And I just want to say that I absolutely agree with the former speakers. I have been a president for this organization for several years, and I am very gratified to hear that the residents here really understand the ACEC and its importance. I want to again state that the ACEC, an area of critical environmental concern, is a wonderful achievement for both of our communities. Weymouth and Hingham took the time to recognize the treasure that they had, the historical bond that they have with the Back River and its surrounding lands. And the protected lands that they are, it is a very important, it's the highest designation of protection a river can have. We have an estuary that we are sharing, both of our communities, and it is an exceptional area. It has been studied by people down at Woods Hole, Dr. Mary Seas and Mary Toomey, two women that established the effort, the grassroots effort, to come up with this designation. And they worked tirelessly for about 40 years on securing the protection of this river and all the wonderful parklands that surround it. There were nine open space parklands. Now, other people have spoke very well and with great knowledge about the wetlands, the protected marine species, wildlife, and we really need to consider that the common sense that we need to really utilize, and environmental common sense, along with the other issues that really are concerns of the neighbors, the traffic issues and so forth. Thinking the project through, we absolutely cannot touch that acre of land that Mr. Matthews spoke of. We do have documentation, as others have spoken about, with the Indian burial site, with the bodies of, I believe, 139 people from the old almshouse, and the fact that their land there is also protected by Massachusetts fish and game. We respectfully ask this group to please reconsider the size of this whole project. It is just too large for that many units. That's the first consideration. You need to look at another location. That, I think, is the first and most important thing. And I would respectfully ask any of the residents here, or people that are running environmental groups, to please contact me. So it's Linda DiAngelo, Back River Watershed Association. You can find us on Facebook. And I thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. Good evening, doctor. Welcome.
I'm Susan Caines, and I'm a resident at 215 Main Street. I'd like to thank my colleague Ted Matthews for speaking for the Bear Cove Park Committee, and for the testimony from the woman from the Back River Watershed Committee. I'm a conservation biologist, and I volunteered to be on the committee because I had formerly been the ranger for the park, and I was intimately aware of the population dynamics of different species there, vertebrate primarily, but some invertebrate as well. Part of the problem that we've been having in the park has to do with, I left for 10 years, and when I came back, the park usage had increased exponentially. At the same time, trying to keep up with the population of people and their pets has been one of the major challenges for the park. I have a quick question. Are you allowing pets in your building?
One of the things that we're going to do is direct the questions to the chair, and this is informational only.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll have that opportunity at a subsequent hearing when the ZBA actually considers what's being proposed. This, in my mind, is a conceptual iteration.
Okay. All right, well, pardon the question, then.
Sure.
But I did want to put that out there, that this is a large problem. But I also wanted to hold up a handout. I just thought of it when I was hearing about what people were talking about today. My tiny little picture shows the 28 critical environmental areas in the state of Massachusetts. Our little one is right here, number 28. That doesn't mean it's the least important. It is the nursery bed for 31, at least 31 species. For at least 31 species of fishes, and there are only a few other sites along there that provide adequate estuarian habitat and salt marsh for these fishes that are included in the major species of the Gulf of Maine. So what we eat and is fished for off of our banks and so on up to the Gulf of Maine is supported by the Back River. And most people don't realize that. One of the main problems in aquatic environments is non-point surface runoff. And we already have lots and lots of cars and exhaust and pesticides and whatnot put down on the ground. And the more you increase the population of people and their automobiles and the exhausts and all of that, when it rains, all that rushes off into the water. The problem with estuaries is if you change one little bit of that formula of fresh water going into the river and non-point surface pollution, you can have ecosystem collapse. And it's always on the edge when you have this much development. So I challenge you to look into non-point surface pollution and its effects on estuaries. And given that we are, we are one of the last few estuaries that serves the fishes of the Gulf of Maine, I would strongly oppose any more development near that river. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Barasso. I live at 110 Hall Street, but I own in Beals Cove. And the two concerns that I had was, one, the school systems and how the children, the influx of children, will affect it. But also, I wanted someone to be aware of the summer program that is at Weymouth Recreation. It is on the estuary, and it's in Great Eska Park, and there are 200-plus children that attend it that would no longer, well, I don't know if they would no longer, but it would affect their summer camp program. It would affect, it's all about nature and learning about aquatic life, and that would definitely affect a large group of children in Hingham and in Weymouth.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Snyder, 23 Back River Road. I live in one of the homes that backs up to, back to the shelter path alongside this property. Would you kindly put up the elevation in the conceptual site plan you have? I'd like to just be able to refer to them. Couple of points I'd like to make. One is that I do think this is an excessive density for this property, especially given the environmental concerns and the traffic concerns and the other points here. Let me first, thank you, make a comment about the traffic. What Mrs. Tully said about the traffic backing up on the illegal cut-through by stop and shop is, it's a rather serious matter. On many weekends, the cars back up from the light at 3A all the way back to Beal, such that cars, people in the shopping center can't even get, get out of the shopping center. It's a serious issue. And in the summertime, when there are sports activities on Lynch Field, cars park along the sides, children are darting out of the cars trying to get over to the field. As a driver there, we have to slow down to a crawl to get through there lest some child run out in front of the car. It's a rather serious situation now, and you would be channeling, you know, hundreds of trips through that area, and it's a very serious issue, and I just don't know how you could resolve that there. You know, mostly, we talk about mitigation, the traffic situations. You have very few options for mitigation here, very few options. So, you know, I would encourage you to think about it, but I'm going to be surprised if you come up with something suitable. That's the first point. The other point is, you know, conceptual drawings are often prettier than reality. They're easy to draw up, make pretty, and often you'll find a developer will put in more greenery than they actually can or will install. And even at that, when I look at the buffer, the green buffering between your development and Back River, it's pretty darn sparse. So, you know, I expect that what would be in actuality put in would be even less than that. And then protecting us light and sound from a rather, would you mind putting that one up, building, doesn't seem to be adequate. So I would ask you to very seriously look at what kind of buffering you would put for us, you know, between us and this property. Remember, we bought this understanding that Hingham Mutual was zoned for its office space, had no expectation, you know, that something like this would come along. And in fact, when I look at that elevation, it looks like, and I was sitting here trying to figure out, does it look more like a dormitory, office building, hotel? I mean, it does not look like Hingham-style residential. And I don't know if you participated or you sat in the room the last couple of days when Avalon came in with their proposal. They had something that was rather boxy, squared off, and very inappropriate for our community, that looked almost similar to this, and the room was filled with people screaming and shouting, and they, to their credit, Avalon developer went away and came back with something that was much more pleasing. It was, to deal with perspective, they put angled roofs so that you don't see it from the roadway and so forth. I think that you've got a tremendous amount of work from an aesthetics standpoint to do to this building. That looks like something you'd find more in an urban as opposed to a suburban community. And the one last point I want to make, back to the traffic situation, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there was a fatal accident. A pedestrian was killed this past summer, standing, waiting for a bus on 3A, right behind the supermarket area there, as you go towards the Rockland Bank.
That's from where Salsas was?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the entrance to, to.
Across from CVS.
Yeah, across from, yeah, by CVS. A pedestrian was standing there, and I guess they slipped and fell. There's tremendous traffic there into the road, and they were killed. So, you know, I just think that we, you know, to think that it's an easy path, as Mrs. Tully pointed out, we rarely walk over there because of the traffic, and it's just not conducive to a pedestrian over to the shipyard. So I just want you to be aware of those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Yes, ma'am. Join us.
Good evening.
Evening.
Janine Suchekki, 15 Park Circle. I'm just going to piggyback off the gentleman who just spoke. As far as the architecture of the building, I just would like if Chairman Haley could just please confirm that that architect that went over so well with Avalon 2's first proposal that was no longer on their proposal was the same architect that they're proposing to use for this proposal? Am I correct?
You know, I think it would be inappropriate to really get into the specifics of the applicant's team at this juncture.
Okay.
This is a soft rollout after all. It's a conceptual iteration.
Right.
I think, in fairness, this is going to go through some changes.
Yes, I'm just trying to point out to some people here who may not be aware, when he was talking about the building, that didn't go over so well. It was done by Cube 3. And if the chairman doesn't feel comfortable pointing that out, I don't have a problem doing it. And.
All right. Hey, let's focus on.
Okay. Well, this is part of the focus. So I would like to think that they will take that into consideration, which they said they would do tonight. And my only other question is, which I don't know if it's provided in the paperwork to you, or if this is something I should ask them at the zoning board of appeals, is what the change in the setback is from the road? From the drawing, it looks like they did keep some of a setback, but it looks like it's less than half, and I was just curious if we knew how much it was. And that's about it.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, it's my understanding that this is a conceptual iteration.
Okay, great.
And it's a soft rollout. In other words, there's no hard plans. And I think the applicant himself or itself indicated that this was in the very early stages, and they were socializing the idea with the community, and specifically seeking this kind of input so that it would have an effect on whatever they did eventually submit to the ZBA. Who is.
Thank you. And, you know, I might actually know that what I'm doing might not be right in line, and maybe I have a purpose to it, so I will sit down at this point and thank you, Chairman Haley.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And Mr. Fage, I knew I'd. And Mr. Fage, I knew I'd hear from you. Come on down. Hey, Barnet. How you doing?
My old friend. Until now. Now, first up, Barnet Fage, 100 Wampe Tech Road. I'd like to thank this gentleman for showing us a picture of what Hingham's character really looks like. You did a really good job with the Audi, I believe. But everything else, it sort of looks like Gothic Mosconean to me because it just, it doesn't fit. That's number one. But some of the issues that I'd like to address. First, I'd like to speak with Sue. Uh, Sue, this is a 40B project, correct?
All right. The rule is you address the question to the chair, and if the chair elects to consult with council, he will do so.
I didn't go to law school.
It is a 40B project. Of course it is. They wouldn't be able to build this under conventional zoning.
If I have to ask you the question, or will the chairman allow me to ask?
No, 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 no. We're not going to get into conversations with council.
Okay. Well, my question really is, is it seems as though your hands, the selectmen's hands, are all tied in this. And it seems as though that 40B, you know, we have people who are unelected. We're being governed by stealth by these people on a state board who do not live in this town, and we are being forced to deal with this. And my question, one of my questions is for the selectmen, could you possibly check into it, maybe using some FOIA requests? How many projects have been turned down for 40B at the state level? Who are the people at the state that are making these decisions that we have to live with forever? My next issue I would like to bring up is the traffic impact. They tried speed bumps, traffic calming a while ago. It was supposed to be our big solve. Didn't work. They are not there. No matter what you do, you cannot fit 10 pounds of caca in a five-pound bag. The road is already, if anybody knows Beale, well, if anybody knows, I'm just kind of, it's rhetorical. We all know Beale Street. We all know the traffics that's on there. We all know the traffic at the end of North Street where North and Beale meet. I mean, we have become sort of a, the traffic in this town has become unmanageable. All this is going to do is contribute to that. Now, it is zoned right now, apparently, as an office building. How we can change it under 40B and allow 300, 200, even 100 units? It's just, it's something that I think that the town would probably, even though apparently there has been money spent already trying to fight 40B, and we don't meet the requirements, I believe that can be challenged. I'm not a lawyer. You guys are lawyers. But I believe the town would be behind you. And this might be something for a town meeting to say, could we actually find out who these people are and why they're making these decisions? Because they have an agenda, and their agenda is not the same agenda as the people in Hingham who come here because they love the town. This is like something you see in Cambridge, possibly in Brooklyn, possibly in Queens. I mean, it's a monolith. The original shipyard, that whole area, was forced on us, the town, by the government during World War II. And it seems to be continuing to be forced on us. We seem to have no choice. You people become moot when we have unelected, appointed officials who don't live here affecting all of us. So I think it's something that we, as a town, could probably collectively get together and challenge. And if we made enough noise, there might be some other towns that might join in with us because they're facing the same thing. I don't think any of us have a problem with the developers trying to make money. It's just that we are responsible for picking up the tab after these folks have left. We're already seeing it on Route 3A. We're already seeing people making cuts through in the new Avalon project. That's in the Avalon 1 project. So this is something that, I mean, we all have to deal with it. And everybody who's south of Weymouth is going to be caught in traffic jams. We're already experiencing it. So I, you know, I understand what you folks, as selectmen, are saying, and this is conceptual. But I, for one, don't want to hear about what we can't do. I would like to hear from our council what we can do to protect our interests. And, thank you.
Okay. In the spirit of disclosure, Barnet and I communicate frequently and argue often. I will say, though, that in terms of the shipyard, in 1942, when that shipyard was built in six months, the world was in a very perilous place, and the Axis powers were at its height. And in three years, 227 ships were built in that yard to support the Allied effort. And I am convinced, even though this is my own personal opinion, that the Battle of the North Atlantic was decisively contributed to by what was produced in that shipyard. So I am very proud of what was there, both then and now. In terms of the 40B process, that stands for a statute. That is a state statute that was passed by the legislature, by the legislature in Beacon Hill, speaking to the need for affordable housing. It's been in existence for four decades, council? Something like that? And it gives, and it gives the opportunity for affordable housing to be built in such a way that it makes it very difficult for communities to resist it in those communities that do not have 10% of its housing stock counted as affordable. This town has resisted certain aspects of that statute for years. There's two people sitting in this room that were named parties before the SJC on this very issue. And it was decisively determined that we lacked the standing to object. And we've been dealing with this issue since 2001, and we continue to deal with it. But as Ms. Byrne said the other night, the surest way to beat the 10% rule is to get to the 10% rule. So, you know, I respect the frustration in the room on this. This is a soft rollout, as I say. Well, I don't say it. The applicant said it. But clearly, the absence of engineers presenting any kind of concrete detail is confirmation of that. This is a community outreach. This is a little different than what we saw on the other project down the street where it was further along. I think this gives the community an opportunity to weigh in. Ultimately, this will be decided by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is not elected either, but they are appointed. They are your fellow citizens. They have decided 40B projects before. They're familiar with the standard. They're ably assisted by council with any kind of questions that may arise in terms of the substantive standards that apply to this or the procedural steps that have to be taken to preserve the town's rights. So that's what we're doing. We are working at this from all angles. And part of working at it from all angles is to invite you here tonight so that you can hear what they have to say. But more importantly, they can hear what you have to say. I think you've expressed that. If you wish to continue expressing it, we can do so. But I think they know what they have to do. I think their work is clearly defined beyond the bricks-and-mortar aspect of this project. Would anyone like to add anything? Another question? You may. If we were at war, we wouldn't be building a building like that. We'd be building warehouses and manufacturing.
I'll get to you in a minute. Mr. Young. How are you?
Randy Young, 18 Back River. While I heard how there's a lot of need to make this project very amenable for Hingham and its historic nature and everything, I really have to tell you to hop in the car and just imagine what this is going to be like when we're going north on Beale Street. We go past Taylor Lane. We go past the Hingham Woods, Beale Cove, and then we get to our location where I live, Back River. And then there's going to be these huge, massive buildings. Totally, there's got to be scale. It can't go from this to that. It just can't be. Not if your words are true to what you said. Okay? The other thing is, I have to tell you, I've been walking in Beale Cove now for a couple of years. And last winter, the septic system, or I shouldn't say septic, sewer system backed up several times. That system is stressed. It's probably at its limit. The, and from the Sewer Commission, it actually has probably more alarms going off at the pumping station than any other pumping station in town. So that is an area that really has to be considered in this project when you're looking at your cost-benefit. Okay? So that's what I wanted to add. But really, to me, this is like trying to put an elephant into a hamster cage. It's way too big.
Thanks, Ray. Do you really want to get into a response?
So that pump station is basically Hingham Woods, Beale Cove Village, and then it was upgraded to build your neighborhood. So we expect, just because of all the calculations, we expect that in order to accommodate what we have, we, you know, we're planning on having to upgrade to accommodate this use as well.
Okay.
So that's in...
That's a given.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Libby Claypool, 45 Back River Road. And Alyssa Tully and Mark Snyder and several people, Randy, have spoken quite capably for the neighbors there. But as a, looking at this site plan, the one that's behind that mock there, if you look on that, I guess, west side, the, on that right side, being one of those abutters, it's the shady buildings that you see on the right, being one of those, you talk about the parking, and the parking in the middle of the building, how you're putting this park overwards to keep the, on the top of the parking, to keep those neighbors to not have lights coming in. Well, as in a butter right here, you've got a parking lot right there, and the building, you said, is 100 feet from the property line. So these parking spaces, unless everybody, even if they back into them, there's going to be headlights coming into my home and everybody that's on that side right there. So you're actually providing better consideration to the neighbors here that you're protecting them from the headlights. But you've got all this parking right here that's shining right into these abutters right there. So, I mean, we, as a group that directly abut it, you have much less of a clearance that you're giving to us as a consideration than you're giving to any other area in this whole, that section is the worst. So, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Margaret Donabed, 47 Back River. And I'll be brief. But it occurred to me, everybody go back to July or August, thinking about driving to the beach and the traffic that you sit in that's a snail trail from, I don't know, about maybe Lowe's all the way in. So if you add another 300 cars or what to that on a beautiful summer weekend day, that doesn't sound like fun. So I want everybody to think of that, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andreas Harzeman, 3 Ridge Hill Road, Hingham. With all due respect, something like this, while I'm, you know, listening, and I agree with most of the residents here, I'm thinking already three steps ahead. And what that means is, there's other commercial properties that are in Hingham, obviously. Is this going to be an entree way for other developers to come in and create these types of, you know, living situations? We lived in South Boston. We moved out because we wanted to have a nice suburb, comfortable living. South Boston is out of control right now. That wonderful little, you know, place that it was such a tight-knit community really lost that. There's so much building going on that it's not the South Boston it used to be. You know, while, yes, that is a little bit extreme. I think it's, you know, we're not that, it's not that far-fetched. You know, somebody decides, okay, well, this property gets sold, why not right up the road? Let's create another apartment building. How about that? How about let's create another apartment building? And then furthermore, we already have, you know, little sensitive issues with the varsity field at the high school, with the lighting and the speaker system. Are we going to have issues with Lynch Field with the practices and the lighting that's over there? Are we going to start getting complaints that now the lights are on too long over there? You know, those are little things. And then furthermore, are we going to have, who's going to pay for the additional police detail? Is that going to come out of the youth football league, you know, budgets? Or, you know, youth baseball league budgets? So these are kinds of things that, you know, I think we have to be cognizant of. You know, it's not just the start of this. And I think we have to think, you know, further down the road, are we going to lose that town feel? And who's going to cover the additional expenses?
Thank you.
Those are all good points that you raise, sir. The 40B process is not without limits, however. And once the town has passed the threshold, it will be in a different place in terms of its ability to respond to projects that have a density that exceeds what's permissible under the zoning bylaw. So it's, but your point is not lost on me. Anyone else like to comment? Or, yes, ma'am. Join us.
Faith Burbank, 17 Andrews Isle. Thank you for this opportunity to do a rollout for the public. It's very much appreciated. And, Mr. Haley, my concern always is with development, our water resources. What is our drinking water? We know that the Ware River basin is already stressed. We have exceeded in the summer months our capacity of 3.5 million gallons per day with the existing situation. What happens, and how do we go from here? Point B, last year or two ago, we had water forums in Hingham, and I think a selectmen were represented in each one of those. At any rate, one of the forums had a state, a person from the Water Resource Program, and said, at this point, Hingham, when you plan to need more water, which you're going to need for developments, you're going to have to go for new permits and figure nine to 10 years to get those permits through because you're in a stressed basin. And you have high regulations to overcome those conditions in order to look for further water out of the basin. So I just bring that point up because it is a large concern for me and should be for all of us because we need air and water to live.
Thank you.
And just to add to Mrs. Burbank's point, one of the challenges is that it's very difficult for a community to petition to increase its draw from the aquifer. Here in Hingham, we also have 23% unaccounted-for water, which means that 23% of the water that we draw out of the water sources does not, is not metered. And it's, what we've been told sort of anecdotally is that it would be very difficult for us to petition the DEP to increase our draw from the water when we are wasting 23% of the water we already have. So that process that Mrs. Burbank just outlined would be even more difficult because of the unaccounted-for water.
Thank you. That's water flowing into the ground, and we have no idea where it's going. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a point, raise a question? All right. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues if they'd like to comment. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to be brief at this point, but I want to thank the alliance for coming, obviously, and giving us an idea. I'm not overly impressed. I didn't, I don't think they expected any of us to be, to be honest with you. That's my opinion. I will see something different down the line. I have no idea what it'll be. But it seems to be the case most times when these presentations come out in the beginning. it seems to be the case most times when these presentations come out in the beginning. But I want to thank everybody here for coming. I want to thank everybody for sending out their emails and information because it's very important to me to be able to understand the concerns that you have. And the twist to this presentation, as much as by Alliance, as by the folks who informed me tonight, was the environmental and the historical issues that are, you know, uh, specific to this area and the estuary. You know, it, it kind of hits home. I've heard it a number of times, but tonight especially, just the way it was presented, it was very helpful. And, uh, obviously, I'm sure we'll hear more about that. Um, to the extent that I can, uh, I will be supportive of whatever position you take. I take that as my job, as, as my responsibility as an elected official, and it's as simple as that. So I will look forward to talking to you and listening from you and hearing from you, uh, as this process rolls forward, and I'll do whatever I can to protect your interest.
I'd like to say something.
Just, just briefly, um, thank you to the, um, to the Alliance team, to everybody for coming. Some of you have also been here in the last few weeks for Avalon. I feel like as a community, we've all gotten a little bit smarter, um, about this topic of, of 40B. Um, I guess what I would just say to the applicants is that at, at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about, um, one of the important things to you is to relate to the site versus imposing on the area. And I think what you've sort of heard tonight are some concerns raised by different constituencies about just that. And, and I think a lot of concerns that I think some of the initial reaction here is that this is imposing on the area. And I thank you for coming this early in the process, and I invite you to reach out. I invite you to reach out to the Bear Cove Park Committee, to the sports groups, to the direct abutters, uh, to the watershed groups, uh, to the Sewer Commission. Because I think in those dialogues, what's, what's going to help us all figure out is, uh, whether a project of this size and scale can relate to the scope, to the site, or whether it's going to impose on the area. Um, I would just offer that when, when the drawing came up, and I'm, I'm one of those people that you say 12 acres, 300 units. It's kind of hard to know how that all fits together, so the drawings are helpful. I am a little surprised at how much of the site is taken up by building or parking. Um, I expected a little bit more, more green space. And again, I know we're in the conceptual stage, but I would, um, I think you have a number of people here who would be eager to work and talk with you, um, and, and, uh, as you continue to move this along. So I would please invite you to reach out to, um, to these folks. And, and folks, if they reach out to you, I would encourage you to engage in the dialogue. Um, the sooner we engage in the dialogue, the more it's helpful for the community. Um, not talking to the Alliance team isn't going to slow this process down. It's just going to be a missed opportunity to have some dialogue. So I, I hope we can all continue to do that.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Um, I think I've said enough. Um, I, I don't take a position on what Alliance has talked about tonight because they've talked about something conceptual in nature. Um, hopefully what will happen here is that, um, this forum for the exchange of views will serve as a springboard, uh, for further conversation that will have a beneficial effect on whatever is eventually proposed. And that's not just the site itself, but how it interacts with the area in terms of traffic circulation as articulated by Ms. Tully. Um, and, and certainly the, the concerns as expressed by the Bear Cove Park Committee and its members. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for being so respectful in the presentation of your views, and good night to you.
Do you have a couple of appointments?
Yep.
Oh, really?
I'd rather let him just clear out.